There he is. The star of the show.
Good evening, the time is seven P M. And I'll now call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Next item on tonight's agenda is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on May third. Does everyone receive those minutes?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I make the motion.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Sean. Any errors, changes, or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. The next item is acceptance of tonight's agenda. I do have one change this evening under new business eight is new business letter F. Fourth quarter transfers for Board of Education Building Maintenance Fund. You can cross that out and in its place, the new letter F will be American Rescue Funds. Replacement of engine number two, set public hearing date. And with that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I make that motion.
We're in a race. Go ahead, I'll second it.
Thank you both, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. All right, under communications and correspondence, I do have two correspondents to share, both of which I did share with the Board of Selectmen via email. But I do want to read these into the record just so the public is aware. So I received an email and a letter from a Portland resident, Martha, actually two, Martha and Jay Swanson on Ames Hollow Road. And so I'd like to read this letter that I received. This was dated May third, twenty twenty-three, and it was sent to myself and Andy Dionne, our Parks and Recreation Administrator, Director. Mr. Curly and the Board of Selectmen, our new park at Route seventeen is a wonderful addition to our town and is widely used year round. As frequent walkers and spectators at various sporting events, we can attest that it is used by townspeople ranging in age from infants being pushed in strollers to the elderly walking on the paved trail and all ages in between. One only has to ride by on weekends from spring to late fall to see the packed parking lots with baseball, softball, soccer, walking trails, and playground splash pad in full use. We are writing to ask the Board to consider purchasing and installing an AED, which is an automated external defibrillator on the building at the new park. This would be a proactive decision, given the amount of people who use the park, the sports being played there, and the ranges of ages utilizing the park. We all have heard, read, or perhaps know someone whose life was saved or could have been saved by having this device available. Portland's Little League softball and soccer coaches are all trained in CPR and the use of an AED. The device talks the user through the process of using it where needed. Many municipalities install AEDs in their parks. For example, we have seen AEDs installed in parks in Lower Marion Township, Pennsylvania, several of which were even on freestanding poles. We reached out to their Parks and Rec Department and were told that installing AEDs was a decision that the township made as they improved their parks. We inquired if there had been any vandalism of them and they were told no. We have also seen an AED hanging on the outside wall of a small visitor center on the main street of Cape Cod, of a Cape Cod town. These devices reflect a concern for visitors and townspeople's safety. A quick Google search indicated that an AED can range in price from twelve hundred to twenty-nine hundred. We wonder if towns might be able to purchase these through a municipal distributor for a reasonable price. Perhaps our Parks and Rec Department and local EMTs would have insight into the pros and cons of an AED at the new park. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Martha and Jay Swanson. So I just wanted to share that in communications. And we can discuss later if the Board would like. But the other letter that I did receive was from the DOT. I reached out again regarding those rumble strips that were supposed to be added. Bob, you might remember last year when Route seventeen was paved. And I received a response this morning. And it says, good morning for Selectmen, the CLRS on Route seventeen in Portland will be installed later this year. The installation is usually performed a year or so after the resurfacing takes place. Our office spoke with the state's maintenance forces to confirm that it is still on the radar for later this year. Thank you for following up. So good news, I guess, but still the way is off. And that's it for communications and correspondence that I have. So we can open it up to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment? Is there anyone in the chat? Okay. Is anyone here from the Committee on Solidarity? See anyone today? Mike, did you get a report?
I didn't get a report this month.
Huh, okay. Well, I guess we can table that for now and if Hope or Liz join us, we can let them give us an update later. So next, under old business, is item B, appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. Are there any appointments this evening?
No, we don't have any.
No?
No.
No? Okay. So we can move on to new business. So in your packet, you have a few items this evening. So the good news is I want to thank everyone who turned out to vote on the budget last week. It was a, not the, you know, not the exciting turnout that we, that we would like to see, but it still was up twelve percent over last year. So we'll take small wins when we can get them and the budget was passed by a margin of over two to one. And with that, now that we have a budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, we have to formally adopt the mill rate. So in your packet, you have a resolution before you. Would someone like to make this motion?
I'll take it. Resolution Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, dated May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Adoption of the mill rate for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year. Whereas the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget for the Town of Portland estimates at four million, six hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars will be received from the state of Connecticut. And without this, the mill rate would be thirty-eight point eight-five mils. Now therefore be resolved that the mill rate for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four be and is hereby set at thirty-three point two-seven mils for all taxes due other than motor vehicle, due and payable on July first, twenty twenty-three and January first, twenty twenty-four. And be it further resolved that the mill rate for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four be and is hereby set at the state cap of thirty-two point four-six mils for motor vehicles due and payable on July first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, John. Is there a second?
I'll second then.
Thank you, Sean. Any discussion on this? I just want to thank the Board here again for all of your work throughout the budget season. And, you know, we'll do it again next year. But for now, we had the, we had a motion and second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Thank you. The next item in your packet is the approval of the non-union administrative pay plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. So I'll give you all a moment to, to review that before we can see if there's any questions.
Ryan, is there a typo for the grounds maintenance crew leader?
Well, where do you see that?
First page at the bottom.
Four, three, six, four dollars and thirty-six.
I would hope so.
Yeah. You know what it might be? Actually, it might not be a typo. Because the grounds maintenance crew leader is split with the Board of Education. This might just be the, the town's portion. We cover ten percent of the, of the grounds crew leader. So I don't believe that is a typo. And if it is, we can, we can correct that next time. But Tom went over this quite a bit. I, I don't, I don't believe he made any, any mistakes on this. I would be very surprised. Would someone like to?
I'll, I'll read it.
Okay.
Resolution Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Non-union administrative pay plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Resolved that the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four pay plan for non-union part-time specialists, seasonal employees, and administrative professional executive and elected officials as outlined on the attached be and is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Sean.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ralph. Any further discussion on this? And I just want to check, Ryan, that sounds right about the ten percent Board of Ed, right?
Yeah.
I think so.
Ryan, what's the cost of living for this from last year?
For, for, for this?
Yeah.
I can tell you, we're still in negotiations with our, you know, I don't know if we want to.
No, that's fine.
All right, so we had a motion made and seconded. Did we, did we vote on this?
Not yet.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. All right. The next item is adopt other budgets, so this is another part of the budget passing. These are, these are all funds that monies will be transferred to in order to sustain these various departments. So with that, someone?
All right. Resolution Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, May seventeen, twenty twenty-three. Adoption of the other operating budgets for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. Resolved that the other operating budgets for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four as listed below and further outlined on the attached be hereby adopted. Animal Control Fund, one hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars. Town Aid Road Fund, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand and seventy dollars. Youth Services Fund, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. Resource Recovery Fund, three hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven hundred, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. Building Maintenance Fund, eighty-two thousand dollars. And Park and Recreation Fund, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars. Be it further resolved that the capital improvement budget for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four as outlined on the attached in the amount of one million, twenty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars with three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars being town source funded projects, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars water source fund projects, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars sewer source fund projects, and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars State of Connecticut funded projects be and is hereby adopted.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, John. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Thank you all. The next item on tonight's agenda is item D under new business, which is a resolution on a request for waiver of bid requirements with Mizzy Construction. Now Ryan O'Halpin is here this evening, our Public Works Director, to go over this request and what, the intention here and what we're trying to do with this. How you doing, Ryan?
Good. How about you guys?
Good.
Good.
So everyone's familiar with the Brainerd project. Back in January, they started digging for building E on the northeast corner of the property, which is very close to Perry Ave. And it was noticed that rock was about two feet down. It's mostly brownstone, some of it comes up easy, some of it doesn't. But where the water line is on Perry Ave, or the proposed water line is, is very close to the existing line. So if they were to dig down and try and, try and rip that rock up or hammer it, we felt that the existing line was under, you know, was under a lot of danger, you know? And we were going to have significant water losses. And it was just going to be a full mess and probably, probably a health hazard and, and all sorts of issues that, that we wanted to avoid. So I, I wrote them a letter and proposed changing it to the west side and extended it south so that way every service could get connected. And then every, you know, we don't have to worry about that old. So it's a two-inch galvanized line that's currently on Perry Ave and it's right on top of the rock. So we wouldn't have to worry about this shaky line anytime in the future. There's also a gas line that needs to go down the road. I have them pause to do that after the water line. That way there is no issue on that end with the existing water line as well. We went through a lot of meetings with DeMarco. I was trying to push all the costs onto the, the developer, which would be, DeMarco Constructors obviously has the site right now. And, you know, after those meetings, they, they basically came to the conclusion they're only going to contribute ten thousand dollars to the changes on Perry. And the town would have to cover the rest. Now they owe three hundred and some odd feet, three hundred and forty feet, let's call it. The town, this, this is a bid waiver to have Mizzy complete the two hundred and sixty-five feet to the south and another about forty feet of twelve inch to come across to the west side of Perry and to connect every service and a new hydrant, because there's an existing hydrant that would need to be abandoned at the north end of Perry. So that's the, the short history of it. But I'm willing to answer any questions I think you might have.
So all of this work is to benefit town residents? It's not benefiting the development?
Correct. Yeah, this is to, to get all those residents on a new water line. We basically get a new water line on Perry.
So as you look at the property right now from, from Marlboro Street, Perry's on the left-hand side, what your, this proposal is sending the water line down the other side of that, that foundation that they're putting in and then going behind it and hooking to Perry that way. But you'll get out, you'll get out of that whole mess with everything sitting on top of the ledge at Perry, right?
Correct. So this, this moves the water line further from the existing line. If you're looking at Perry, looking down the street, facing Brainerd, the existing water line's on the right-hand side of the road. The new one will be on the left-hand side of the road, closer to the existing houses.
Right.
Which would allow an easier connection to all the services and put in new curb boxes and so on.
Do they know, is there any ledge in that road that?
There is. So we're still going to hit ledge, but we're further from the existing line. So it's something we're going to keep an eye on, but I, I feel it's less of a hazard. Where before we were about four feet away, let's say, now we're about eight to ten feet.
How big of a project is this and how much of a disruption to those homeowners on Perry?
Um, it's, it's probably going to take, let's call it a week. A week of work between putting in the line, backfilling the trench. Every day they're going to backfill the trench all the way up, so residents will be able to go home and, and. It's going to be a disruption. I mean, the interruption to their service will be minimal because they're going to, they're going to do pressure. Everything's going to go to a curb box. That's what's going to get installed. The, the old water line will still be running. And then they're going to do every, the disinfection and the, the pressure test of the line. And then it'll be ready to connect every, every house. And we'll do those one at a time. And then once everyone's connected, abandon the old line and cap it.
What will the condition of the road be after the construction?
We're gonna, we're gonna pave back the trench and it'll be, it'll be a little rocky. And it's not, not in too good of shape right now, so it might be something on the list for next year to, to possibly resurface it. Depending how this trench goes, I'll look at the condition of the subsurface asphalt and see if we could do a mill and pave or see if we need to do a full reclaim of the, so, of the asphalt there. But that would need to be done either way. With the, with the old service lines being abandoned last year and all the houses being demoed on the one side of the road, there's a lot of, a lot of areas that are just patched in right now.
Yep.
So the only cost to the town is the additional money for materials, correct?
Correct. Well, and then.
The forty-seven, seven fifty.
Forty-seven, seven fifty for Mizzy.
Best of Mizzy and then the twenty-two, we're buying our materials.
Yeah, do you want to just talk a little bit about why we're, this is a, it's a bid, a request for a bid waiver with Mizzy Construction, just to touch on that, so?
Yeah, so Mizzy, we were proposing labor only for them. That way we can buy the material for the town and there's not a markup on top of that to lessen the cost to the town. And they worked with us on that. We had negotiated them down. They were originally at sixty-eight thousand for labor only. And we got it down to forty-seven, seven fifty, which we felt was reasonable. Looking at the price, the recent price of brownstone ave that Hemlock did a couple of years ago, this was, yeah, as reasonable as it can get. And Jacobson had reviewed this and the Water Department as well.
Does this price include the ten thousand from Bertram?
This does not, but there are several unknowns, mostly pertaining to the rock.
Okay.
And what the cost of that is going to be. So it's possible this number goes as low as thirty-seven, seven fifty. It's possible it's as high as forty-seven, seven fifty, depending on the extra costs for any rock ex on the road.
I think now is the time to do it. And we have them down there anyhow. Or DeMarco has them down there and they've been working with the town on our water system as it is. So I don't see what would gain us anything bringing in anyone else and going to Perry. I agree with the plan.
Do you like to move the plan?
Oh, of course.
Ryan's the expert. If he thinks it's a good price, it's a good price.
I gotta leave two pages, I can't hold two.
Resolution Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Request for waiver of bid requirements, Mizzy Construction Incorporated and related materials. Whereas the Town of Portland Water Department has been working with DeMarco Constructors and subcontractor Mizzy Construction on the installation of a new water main for the Brainerd Place Development located on Marlboro Street, Route sixty-six between Main Street and Perry Avenue. And whereas recently unforeseen existing site conditions, including shallow rock at the proposed water main location on Perry Avenue have been identified by the town engineer and Water Department personnel. And whereas water main design changes have been made by the town engineer and Public Works Department to Perry Avenue's water mains location length and the addition of seven service connections to avoid issues with the existing water main and possible extensive service interruptions for the residents of Perry Avenue. And whereas Mizzy Construction Incorporated is the contractor working for DeMarco Constructors installing the water main and working on all underground utilities for the Brainerd Place Development. And whereas Mizzy Construction Incorporated is involved in installing a twelve-inch water main as part of Brainerd Place Project on Perry Avenue. And whereas Mizzy Construction Incorporated provided the Town of Portland with an estimate of forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars labor only to complete the water main with the design changes to move and extend the water main to the other side of the avenue. And whereas the additional materials for the project will be provided by the town at an estimated cost of twenty-two thousand after obtaining quotes. Now therefore be it resolved that in the best interest of the town pursuant to section twelve oh eight, subsection seven of the Portland Charter, the Board of Selectmen hereby waives the bidding requirements of section twelve oh eight of the Portland Charter as it pertains to utilize Mizzy Construction Incorporated as the contractor to install the new water main on Perry Avenue and for the town Water Department to obtain additional needed materials. And be it further resolved that the Board of Selectmen authorizes the First Selectman, Ryan J. Curly, to act on behalf of the Town of Portland to enter into any, into any, an agreement related to these improvements.
I'll second that. Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Also, I want to point out, there is a typo on this, Sharon. It's, I don't know, one, two, three, four, five, the fifth paragraph, the whereas. Brainerd is missing the D in Brainerd, so if we could just correct that.
Yeah, I saw it.
Yeah. And any further discussion on this?
So after the bid waiver, where are we getting money from? Where are you going to pull the money from?
The water. The water.
Water Department?
Yeah.
Okay.
Capital for Water Department.
Capital for water. Got it. Thank you.
When will this be done?
Should be done in the next month.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. All right, thank you. Well, so Ryan, I guess you might as well stay up there
Yeah.
for our next one. And the next one is item E under new business. Possible use of contingency for fence, fence installation on Brownstone Avenue. And this is a. And this is a, a portion of town-owned road on Brownstone Avenue. And uh, Ryan, do you wanna speak a little bit about it?
Sure. So this is the uh, town-owned property between um, two eighty-five Brownstone and uh, three eleven Brownstone, which is the hubby for hire property and the quarry view property. Um, the area has been, has been cleared out and is um, somewhat hazardous. There's a walking path there now. And um, you know, some, some kid or someone could, could end up wandering over there and it's a steep hill right to, right into the quarry. So um, out ahead of this joint event with the Riverfront Park and Quarry View uh, campground, we um, we're looking to get a fence there to prevent any possible tragic occurrence from happening.
How many, how many feet of fence is that?
Two hundred and twenty feet.
And you're putting chain link up?
Chain link fence, six foot. The uh, the surrounding fence has barbed wire, but we're not gonna put up the barbed wire.
And what's the number we think for this?
Eight thousand, five hundred.
And timeframe to get it up?
It'll be done before the um, June third event. So most likely, I think, next week, um, latest the week after.
You already have the contractor in mind?
Yes. Yeah, received four quotes on it. Um, eighty-five hundred is the low, the low bid.
So, I mean, this is really, for us, it's a safety kind of issue with having a uh, a town-sponsored event. And also Quarry View and Dean Sucey's here this evening. Thank you for coming, Dean. Uh, and June third's a big, it's a big event for everybody in Portland and, and the idea is that we keep everybody safe at the event. And um, and so that's why uh, I asked Ryan to, to look into this and, and we got those four quotes. So um, we do have the, the funds available to use with town contingency, so.
I know I've talked to other people in town about that little area too, and they would've liked to have seen a natural barrier opposed to the chain link. Uh, and some of the reasons is 'cause they want the natural feel of the quarries and the, and the trees and the foli- and the foliage and the thicket and whatever it be. And they're concerned about the chain link fence. As you look across the street at Brownstone Avenue, what can happen in just a couple of years as vines, trees, saplings grow through it, it's not maintained that well. And it ends up looking like garbage at the end of the day. And the second thing is, so we're gonna cover this two hundred feet. Why is that two hundred feet any different than the WPA wall where someone could just fall into the quarry? Or across the street from Silver Street, Brownstone Avenue, again, there's a whole lot of land where you can fall into the quarry on that side. I, what, I don't feel like we're covering the whole quarry, we're just covering a section of it. It's, it's equally as unsafe as those other spots that I just said, than that spot. So I don't know if we're just doing it to do that, serve that little area. It doesn't make any sense to me, why not the whole area?
Um, it's a good question. Um, the wall, the wall, the short wall, you're talking down Brownstone Ave.
Yeah.
That would be a hazard as well. Um, I guess the difference would be we're not inviting people to walk over there, even though it is a nice view. Um, we didn't put a path or a sidewalk right there.
I mean, I think that's the most viewed part of the whole quarry. People parked their car there.
Yeah, parked their car there and looked there.
Little kids go up on the wall, they throw rocks into the water from that spot. If you're asking me, that's the most hazardous part of the whole quarry and we're not addressing that part. And again, across from Silver Street, where that water, wherever Pike Place is, there's a whole cleared out area over there.
Familiar with that spot on Silver Street, but um, but yeah, I'm, I'm-
And that's even cleared up from grass to quarry.
Is this the area that you're talking?
That's the WPA wall. And then I'm talking across-
If you go up Silver Street heading towards Main Street, on the left-hand side is the walkway for people to zip line into the quarry. Talk about the other side of the street.
The, the small quarry.
Small quarry.
Yep.
There is, there is.
Cause that one's not too deep. The WPA wall's not too deep, but you look up. So are you going up Silver?
Yeah.
Right there, to your right.
Yeah, right to the right.
That's about a, probably a seventy or eighty-foot drop right through the street.
This looks like it has a natural barrier here.
Up a little farther, it doesn't tell.
Okay.
And then even along Brownstone Avenue too.
That's the sewer pipe place and then come up more towards Main.
Okay, like up here?
Yeah.
Well, there is a fence here. It looks like.
Go between the water specialist and where Todd Rocketier's water wagon is, it's been all cleared out.
Okay.
And that's on Brownstone Avenue.
Okay. I guess the only difference would be there's no, there's no walking path there, you know, I mean?
Yeah, but they walk from under the bridge at the other parking lot to Brownstone uh, Exploration Park. Just like all summer long, I see traffic coming there from the VFW post. Kids are, kids and adults walking with coolers, all the way from the bridge to the new park, or to the park, I mean. Um, I'm just saying like, I'm not saying it doesn't need to be done. I'm just saying like, we're focusing on this one area, why aren't we focusing on everything? If for the sake of this event going on, can we throw up some of that plastic fencing with some, um, whatever, the ties and the plastic fencing just temporarily until we figure out the whole landscape of everything?
Um, I'll first address like the maintenance concern on the, on the chain link. I'll go back to that. Uh, we did uh, put in a eight-foot gate into the plan for this, so we can get back there and do maintenance. Um, for a plastic fence, I guess I would have to look at the, the fence. I, I don't really uh, what are you saying, like orange fence?
The orange fencing that you have at the town garage.
It's, it's possible. I mean, that'll be uh, kinda ugly. It'll look like we're doing construction there, but I, you know, a chain link fence is no uh, no great-looking thing either. I get that.
A berm with trees, not arborvitae's, but some other kinda trees that grow seven foot a year and block off the quarry. Thicket, uh, pricker, briar bushes.
Could plant trees as well. Um, there are, there are several options. Um, this was the path we went, cause there's a chain link fence on either side. Um, it made sense to connect them. But um, yeah, all options could get looked at. I mean, I'm open to doing anything. The, the number one thing would be to keep people safe, um, for this event.
I, I have a question. We're doing this for the safety, right? We're doing this so-
Yeah.
They're on town property. God forbid someone falls, they get injured, we're liable.
Possibly, well, uh-
Right? There's a possibility that we could be held liable. So if that's the case, don't you think it would be determined by our insurance carrier if we can put a certain type of fence as opposed to another type?
I would say at this point, we, we probably should get involved since we-
I mean, if-
Are acknowledging the issue.
I mean, because he's got all great ideas and I understand where people are coming from, because there was a natural barrier there. And then as we go on, we see other hazards just down the road. And I think at some point, all the hazards should be addressed. But are we going to address them the way that by spending the money, it protects the town?
I, as far as the, Mike's question on the snow fencing, I, I don't know if that would, I don't know if that would adequately protect. I mean, I, I think a natural barrier would be ideal, like uh, to look at aesthetically, but uh, we also are, part of the reason why we're here talking about it tonight is because we're up against the clock and June third is coming up and, and we do want some, something in place to um, you know, to provide a, uh, an event that, you know, the town is a sponsor of. So that's kind of, that's kind of why I wanted to get this uh, to you guys this evening. Uh, I think Ryan did a good job getting quotes, uh, and you know, getting that price, uh, you know, down. It's, it's a lot of fencing. It's what, two hundred twenty or two twenty?
Two twenty.
Um, and I know Dean Sucey is here. Uh, Dean, I'm gonna invite Dean, do you have something to add to that?
Oh, yeah, definitely do.
Would you like to come up and-
Sure.
So, yeah, thank you, Ryan. I think-
Thanks, Ryan.
Good evening. So, answer to your question. Um, unless you've been there, I don't know if you actually walked that path or anything?
I did once it was on the edge.
Okay, so, uh, previously, it was just brush where people are dumping stuff off the edge of the road. And it was prickers and it was trees and the stumps and everything else. Um, in the very beginning, when I went in there, I uh, was cleaning up the quarry, obviously. And I decided to go in there and pull all the garbage out while we had the equipment and the canisters to take the debris away, clean it up. Thinking in the future that we would be able to put, uh, at, at one time we were thinking the sewer line, which we did put in. We, we actually absorbed the cost of the sewer line from hubby for hire. So we have manholes, uh, eight-inch uh, sewer line that we brought in. That's actually under that walkway. So part of that cleanup was inspection to see that the soil is good, and then we put the uh, sewer line going into the property. What the problem is, is a natural barrier, if you try to put trees there, it's, it's literally, the difference between the wall you're talking about, the wall you're talking about is something you could stumble up to, it's at least up to your knees. This is ground level, sixty-foot drop to the water. So, a child could just trip on the sidewalk or in that area and the parent will never catch the kid. If you try to put trees there, they'll never grow because it's solid rock. And to build a wall on top of it to make it look like the WPA wall, to make it thirty-six inches tall, uh, would be a big expense. Plus, on the opposite side, the wall that I built to hold the soil up is already fourteen feet high. So, this fence was uh, something that we were looking for, for a while. As far as the um, debris growing into the fence, we've been maintaining all the town's property from Middlesex all the way down to hubby for hire. You guys actually own the property all the way down to that building. So we mow, maintain, clean the fence. Everything we do there is town property and we do it, um, just to keep it looking good. So um, the chain link fence is not the prettiest thing. And the idea of having Quarry View, the name Quarry View was to give the quarry, the view of the quarry to the people in town. So I don't see how the trees are gonna help. That's not gonna keep here, the town safe. The chain link fence is not the best, but it's gonna keep people from falling off. And we have made the fence behind the wall that's there now. So those stones that we preserved and laid out there to make it look kinda nice, that's gonna be in front of the wall, uh, front of the fence. There's gonna be about a one-foot path, so you could be able to maintain, spray or clean the grass behind that. And then again, we have the gate to go, that gate is for a future pathway that would go around the back of hubby for hire. If the town ever elects to, cause they own that property, they'll be able to go all the way around and follow the rim of the quarry at some time. So if they, you know, when you start bringing all the parks together, uh, that land is across the street where the tanks are, you know, whatever that gets developed and you got the Riverfront Park, all of this is coming together. We talked about this when you were buying the property, that we wanted Quarry View to be part of the system, everybody being together. This pathway is uh, essential to bring into quarry to the people, not just on our side, but all the way around. And um, so it's not for this event. We've been working on this for three years, trying to get the fence up. Um, I'm not saying it was excuses, but it wasn't a need. Finally, the town is working together, which we appreciate. This Portland Quarry Celebration Day is great, because now we're taking the parks like we wanted to, cause we're gonna be using three different locations and it'll be one day of celebration. So that's the whole idea, is being, bringing everybody together and um, having this um, walkway to do it is uh, the perfect scenario for the, what we're going for. So it's, to, to eliminate or not, you know, put a temporary fence there, you're still gonna have to address it later. And it's uh, and at that point, uh, you know, uh, plastic fence is not gonna keep somebody from falling over the edge.
It was a temporary solution to find in a better fence, like-
There's, there's no better fence. The whole idea is that the quarry already has six-foot fence all the way around. They're not gonna go and buy an uh, an expensive, good-looking fence just for one section.
Well, a split rail fence with not, I don't know what it's called with chicken wire, but you put that rose wire behind it and it looks invisible from twenty feet away.
You've still gotta consider that there are certain requirements for people leaning on stuff, you know, weight-wise. You can't even put a split rail fence in. There, you're gonna, you'd never be able to put the post in. It's, you're talking about solid rock. So where they're gonna be putting these poles in, there, these spots are, uh, were placed when the walls were made, when that walkway was made, just for that reason. So to try to get a split rail fence, it won't be high enough to start with. You're still gonna have to maintain a height and it just won't meet the requirements for safety. So it's-
I just think there's other ways out there, that's all I'm saying. Cause you put a berm, you can put the rail into the berm.
Berm. It's impossible, because you're, you're dealing with a slope. So there's a slope that comes down, comes down to a walkway. To put another berm, the berm would have to be in the walkway. You can't put it over the edge of the water, so it would have to be right in the sidewalk. And if you put a berm, you've still gotta put a fence on top of it.
Well, now you have your depth for your poles. I'm just saying there's other ways. I just think this is gonna be a bad solution.
Dollars, you're talking eight thousand dollars. All the guy has to do is put the poles in, put the chain link up, he's done. And you got a wall in front of it. To do anything else, you're talking more money. And then you gotta maintain it. Who's gonna mow the berm? Who's gonna weed the thing? Who's gonna do all that?
That's a good question.
I'm, I'm happy doing what I'm doing right now, but that's not my job.
Yeah.
So-
Your place is for sale, right? You don't know how long you're gonna be there.
Doesn't matter. It's, the thing is that-
Saying you can't maintain it for the rest of your life.
Someone's gonna maintain it, right.
Our property.
Well, quite frankly, I asked for that, I asked to take that land and resurvey it, so when I put the sewer in, I would've put the fence in. I would own that land, it would be my, my situation. But we never got that far. So, right now, you know, we're looking to move down, down the road. You know, we wanna see where the tank farm was, we wanna see that developed. We wanna start getting things moving. So this is part of it. You know, we're moving forward now. Um, like today, I went to the Riverfront Park and I spread all the millings out, did the whole driveway from sidewalk all the way back. And uh, rolled it all out for, you know, that needs an apron over there. Uh, anywhere in town, you'd have to have an apron on the road. There's no apron there and the stuff's kicking out in the road all the time. We sweep it up, we clean it. And uh, so the whole thing is, is that it takes action by everybody and not doing this fence is uh, not taking action if you don't do it. You know, you're just prolonging it. And you're not saving any money, really.
Alright, I'm not talking about saving money, I'm just talking about doing it right once. And making it look aesthetically pleasing, instead of a chain link fence.
If you could see through the fence, as far as I'm concerned, there's nobody here that's more concerned about the quarry and its integrity than me. And, you know, the uh, trees that are beyond it will start growing anyhow and you're not gonna be able to see as well into the quarry. But the chain link fence, at least it'll be clean. We got chain link fence all the way across the front of my property. You know, and it, it, I mean, I can't say I love it, but I don't notice it. Cause once I walk in, I'm looking at the, the quarry itself. All I'm worried about is that nobody falls over that. It's a sixty-foot drop right there, straight to water. And there's nobody gonna get to save you, cause nobody's jumping down in there. It's all kinds of trees and everything in the water. It's, it's pretty bad.
I, I would like to make a motion that we approve this fence. And we look at the other needs of fence that we feel we need to replace or add.
I could add one thing to this. Um, three years ago, I asked Pat Esposito to clean up our two properties up at top behind um, Millillies. That, there was a big mess back there when I first started. So I asked him if I could go up there and, I wanted to clean my property, but he had a lot of junk up there too, that people piled over the years. So I said, if he paid for the dumpsters, I would dig it all up and clean it. So behind Millillies, we cleaned all the land, all the garbage out from in there and everything else. The town owns a pretty good chunk of land up on the top. There's no fencing up there. There was fence that fell over because people backfilled over the top of it over the years and we picked up the remnants out of the dirt. And I did mention to Ryan one time that we should go up there. There is other areas. Up there is bad. You know, they got no trespassing signs up there, but um- But, the difference between that and where we are, you're on the side of Brownstone Avenue. People are coming to River, the Riverfront Park, they're in their cars, they're walking up and down from the parking lot. We attracted people to the edge of the quarry by having a sidewalk or a pathway there. Even if it was just grass, they would still walk there to look at the quarry. That's the difference, that, you know, we attracted people onto a dangerous spot. Up on top of behind Millilis or something like that, we didn't make a pathway for people. There is, you know, there is, there's still a crummy fence in one part, and other places are wide open, but they have to cross other people's properties and stuff. But it's not the same. Down here, we have a pathway that's inviting, and that invitation is, invitation is trouble. And that's why that fence needs to go up.
Thank you, Dean.
Okay.
I move to allocate up to eighty-five hundred dollars of contingency for the installation of a fence on the town-owned property along Brownstone Avenue.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstentions? Do we have one opposed, Sharon, six yeses?
Ryan, just before we lose track of this, Sean talked about it just a touch there. Can we, for our next meeting, put on the agenda a brief discussion to develop a plan for looking into other areas abutting the quarry that are town-owned and potentially dangerous for, to investigate similar barriers for safety purposes?
We can add that to the agenda.
Because I know there are, the area behind Millilis, the area next to Charlie's Water Wagon, because I'm thinking, you're right. During the heat of summer, I've gone down there at three o'clock in the afternoon, and there are people four-thick, walking up and down that street, to and from. A lot of them now go to the parking lot by the park, but a lot of them, on busy days, walk all the way from the bridge. And they're coming by that spot by Charlie's Water Wagon. But it's still, again, it's, I mean, I grew up hanging around those quarries when I was a kid, but they were always covered in poison ivy and trees and brush, you didn't try it. Even that area by Charlie's now is cleaned up. And, I mean, it looks, the view is great, but so is the draw. So, I think it would behoove us to investigate that, and just, you know, start the ball moving to get prices and think about ways to do it. But I think it does make sense. But as Dean said, we've attracted people to this area, rightfully so. I think we have a great landmark down there, it's a piece of history. But as people come, so does liability, so...
I agree, we can get a list together and discuss that at an upcoming meeting. Either our next meeting, sometime in the summer, is that sound?
We can get a map, maybe, an aerial map of the quarry area, I'm sure there's one around. And then, we can kind of identify the areas of concern and go from there.
Okay. We can do that. All right, so, with that, we can move on to the next item under new business, which is item F. Now, this is the American Rescue Fund's replacement of engine number two, set public hearing date. So, in your packet, I shared with you an email from Chief Shay, who is here this evening. Thank you for coming, Bob. With, with where we are at, with our engine number two. And so, as you all know, this board approved and allocated up to eight-hundred fifty thousand dollars of American Rescue Funds for the purchase of a replacement for engine two. And after, and Bob, if you wanna come up, Bob, words, I know, Chief Shay and our fire marshal worked very hard on putting an RFP together and getting that out. And then, with that, I believe we received three bids on trucks. And some of those bids, as you see, didn't, were not all complete, and did not all meet specifications. And it looks like the one that did is, is over our allocated amount. Did I get that, kind of, the gist?
You did in a nutshell. So, yeah, it's been a long process, we probably have as a group, and it's just myself, Ray, and three other members of the group on the committee. And I kinda guide that, hopefully, in the right direction. But, you know, as we made the choice to go out to bid, we did so. Unfortunately, this, the whole industry is changing so fast. We had to go back to the drawing table, as I think I mentioned before, three different times because of the loss of vehicles that are in the queue or pre-engineered to be able to purchase. So, I mean, as soon as they come out of engineering, these trucks are going within less than thirty days. And I think that's just an indication of cost as well as need. So, you know, we did our best to get a bid out. We, we struggled to put together four pages of specifications for, you know, a fire truck that usually consists of over, over three hundred pages, but we, we kinda fine-tuned it as best we can to the specifications that are critically important to the way we operate as a fire department here in Portland, and to kinda keep our interoperability with, with other towns the same, as well as the consistency on, you know, how we operate here with our members, as well as our fleet itself. So, you know, here we are, we went out to bid, and, you know, fortunately, we got three bids back, because that's been a very difficult thing, and it all has to do with timing. A lot of these companies are booked, and they're eight-hundred, nine-hundred days out for a build. So, we lost a few of those, because they certainly felt that they couldn't produce in enough time for us to be able to spend our money, knowing that, you know, they all know the caps on when we have to sign a contract and when we have to expend that money. So, with that said, we received a bid from E1, that was our, our main player in the very beginning. We had a, as you all know, we had a contract that we, we could have moved on, but, you know, we had to follow our requirements, legal requirements, related to not only how we do business here in Portland, but as well as the federal government with the rescue plan money. So, we went out to bid. Those, those trucks sold, as well as two other versions of engineered plans, sold through them. So, unfortunately, E1 was only able to offer us a truck that didn't meet really ninety percent of our specs. I mean, it was completely different. So, you know, we did have an opportunity to talk about that prior to bid, and they did get some engineering relief, but, you know, at a much higher cost. But most of the things that we need, especially the cab, the number of firefighters that we can carry, the amount of water, and the location, didn't pan out. So, we really, so E1 basically was disqualified, because they really didn't meet our specified qual, you know, specifications that we, those that we really asked for. We received another bid from Spartan Smeele. It's a combination company, Spartan, obviously, cabin chassis. They submitted a bid for nine-hundred thirty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty. We spent at least sixteen hours as a committee, last night specifically, till about twelve-thirty in the morning, going over and trying to compare not only the Spartan Smeele, but as you see, the Marion bid below. And what we did was, we concentrated on making sure that our specifications that we listed were either met or not. And the Spartan Smeele, although, you know, a good truck and a little cheaper, some of the reason for that may be that there was over twenty-five items on that bid that did not meet our specifications. And some of those were critical, water tank size, number of seats in the cab. You know, there's, we, we have put together a list, and I don't really need to go into that, but it's certainly available for you. But we wanted to do our homework to make sure we're doing this right. And that's the painful part about trying to look at specifications related to a fire truck versus a manual that you're kinda just going through and picking a truck. So, with that said, they had no engineering as well. So, if you can imagine going through a spec book and trying to relate what they're, what they're actually speaking about, and we've done this for years, and not being able to relate that to at least a preliminary design of a truck, you're really taking a shot in the dark. And we get very concerned about not only the twenty-five specifications that were met, but what the possibility for change orders are after that we don't know, because we can't relate it to a, to a drawing. And they, they clearly stated that they weren't gonna offer a drawing, because they didn't have enough time for engineering. And that's kinda part of the process where it costs them a lot of money to prepare bid specs and drawings for the potential that they might not win a bid. So, we were concerned about that. Marion submitted a bid for nine-hundred and fifty-nine thousand zero ninety-seven. That bid meets just about ninety percent of our specifications. It's very similar, they built our, Marion, Alexis built it, but it's the same company, our tanker. So, they kinda are very familiar with our specifications, the size of our town, how we operate as a volunteer department. So, I think they, they zeroed right in on, on our specifications, knowing that they're really important to us. So, unfortunately, you know, those cost a little bit, and over time, they've really gone up. So, including that preliminary design that they offered, along with that bid spec, it allowed us to really zero in on, you know, exactly what specifications they, they offered, and in relation to what we asked for, and how that played out on the design of the truck. So, there we are. So, in a nutshell, the committee has really no choice, but just to recommend to you that we purchased the Marion-built engine to replace engine two for the nine-hundred and sixty thousand. And five of that, or whereas, you know, there's some contingency in there as well. So, you know, it spells it out in the resolution. It's been a difficult process. I, I'm hoping that the industry changes, but just, just one note. We, we are, we are pressed to get the motor. And we are lucky to have this motor available, this Cummings L9 motor, because two of the suppliers did not bid this, because they've already taken their allotment on the motors for the L9. They have to change based on the EPA, and they're a hundred thousand dollars more, which I can't even realize, but... So, the new Cummings motor that has all the new EPA standards, which many of these vendors now have to get into, because they've been only allowed to get to a certain max on the L9, they have to transition over to these new motors, and they're just, the price is insane. So, we're lucky enough to lock into the L9. Both of these particular engines have the L9. But I'm not sure what the future's gonna bring out of that.
An engine three, we're talking?
I don't know.
One point five.
Fix the compartment, paint it, no.
That's what I'm saying, repower it.
Yeah, you know, maybe it'll stabilize. I don't know if we'll ever see it go down, because the industry can get this, because, you know, it's one of those things where, you know, you can't not buy fire trucks. So, it's, you know, I, I hope it stabilizes. And it's gonna move right into every other piece of equipment, construction equipment, because they're all powered by the same type of motors, and, you know, that seems to be the chassis, and the powertrain seem to be moving the prices up just because of availability, new EPA standards on emissions. You know, we're just seeing a huge increase. But I never thought that I, I mean, I bought our, my, the first fire truck that I built and purchased here for town was three-hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So, things have changed, so... So, this is where we are, based on the bits.
Question, I think, for you, Bob, and maybe Ryan together. We're talking about, according to this, we're talking about a hundred and fifteen grand additional, right? This is ARPA funds?
Yeah.
Now, I know we have to expend those ARPA funds by a certain point.
Very close.
Very close. So, I guess, the only thing I'm, I mean, it's, quite honestly, I think we, you don't have a choice, we have to do this. But what bothers me is, you're making a huge expenditure. You're normally giving them a percentage upfront and paying them the balance when you see that they deliver what you're looking for. But if this money has to be expended, do I understand that we have to pay them all the money upfront?
No. So, we have to allocate the money by the end of this calendar year, by December thirty-first, and we have until the end of 2025 to receive and pay for the, pay for the...
And it'll, it looks like, maybe just make that window.
This will make it.
Yeah, the twenty-six, yeah, the window that they're giving us is anywhere between, you know, fi, four-hundred and eighty, five-hundred days to seven-hundred and forty days, so... And, and we liked that, too, because we were given a window for the other apparatus, but it's the same cabin chassis, and I'm not sure how they would get that any earlier than the other, so... And then, you get concerned, you know, about, you sign a contract, and then, all of a sudden, the delivery issues are an issue, and they just, you know, they'll have to push you out, and, but, you know, you're in. You know, we, we've done business with Marion, I'm comfortable with their numbers, certainly comfortable with the bid that they provided us, as far as all the time that we spent to go through it. It's just that I don't think any of us on the committee, as well as you are, or anybody else is, or just, the prices just are difficult. I know Oxford just signed for a rescue truck, it doesn't have a pump. Rescue truck can't put your fire out, okay, but it's one-point-three million. That's why our eighty-seven looks so good.
So, we don't need to approve this resolution this evening. We would, just like the last time, anytime we use American Rescue Funds, we, we need to hold a public hearing. So, I would like someone to make a motion to hold a, a public hearing for the purpose of this resolution on June seventh, twenty-twenty-three, at six forty-five P.M. And then, after that public meeting, at that Board of Selectmen meeting, we would provide it, you know, the board is in favor, we would then move the resolution.
I'll make that motion, it's okay with you. I move that we schedule a public hearing for June seventh at six forty-five P.M. to address the issue of utilizing additional American Rescue Plan funds for replacement engine number two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sean. Any further discussion on this? All right, all those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries, thank you.
Well, thank you for the help and support through the process.
So, Bob, I will tell you, I was thinking of you guys, so, last night, I was watching nine-one-one, and they had their fire engine go in, down when the bridge collapsed, and slides down and gets destroyed, and all I could think of is, oh, my God. What happens in that scenario? You've got five-hundred to seven-hundred and forty days to replace it.
That's when you pull an old Maxima, retire.
Rent it from Jersey.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you. So, we can move on to status and committee reports. I know Ryan, our Public Works Director, is still here. I know, we've got a lot of projects going on. Do you wanna come up and just brief the board real quick on, on, you know? I mean, I can, I can go over, I have a list, but I don't know if you wanna...
You save me talking?
I mean, I, I talked about, I think I sent the board emails on the fire alarm at the, at the Public Works garage, at the, at the pumps, things like that, you've...
Sure.
Yeah.
So, I'll start with what was happening today. We were doing the fuel pumps and fuel management system at the Public Works garage. The fuel pumps are in, they gotta complete the piping tomorrow morning. The management system will be installed, but not active until after the software is uploaded on the computer. We print cards for everyone and get everyone trained on the new system. So, that'll be a few weeks out, maybe a month at the most. But it's all getting installed, it looks great. So, that project has moved forward. The, the next project, I'll stay right there at the garage. The fire alarm system is going to be installed starting on May thirtieth. And that should take only about two weeks, is what they estimated. I don't know if they're gonna hit any issues, but it should, by mid-June, we should have a working fire alarm system at the Public Works garage. There, there are several other projects, the GZA project to find water. They're going to be drilling test wells next week at two sites, one being the Route Seventeen Park, the other at one-fifty-seven Ames Hollow, at the Harper property across from Gildersleeve Road. Then, other projects we got going on, we got the ARP projects for Russell Ave Water, which that's still in design. That one... That one, I think we're looking to get that bid out over the summer, possibly construction in the fall. But it, it all depends how it shakes out over the next month. They are pretty far along in the design. The other A R P project for the pump station upgrades, we got the thirty percent drawings last week. They're working on getting us the sixty percent sometime next week. So that's in progress as well. The sidewalk project on Freestone is, we got an update today. We're meeting with EverSource next Tuesday to finalize the pole locations on Riverside Street. That way, um, yeah, we don't have any issues with possible change orders. And EverSource is going to move the poles before construction, so there's no issue with the contractor and anything in their way. So we're making sure that's all set prior to that going out. Then, um...
Freestone?
Freestone app. We are, I have the town guys replacing all the catch basins and the manhole frames and covers, and we're installing a new mainline valve on Freestone. And we're going to be milling and paving the road up to Cross Street, from Main Street up to Cross Street, June twelfth. So June twelfth to sixteenth. I have letters going out to the residents on Freestone. And, um, yeah, it's, it, that's an exciting project moving forward. B and W paving is going to be doing the milling and paving for us. And that's, uh, that's off state contract pricing. I did get a few numbers on that, and a couple other contractors wanted more square yards to come in and do work here in Portland. And B and W was willing to just come in and do that section of Freestone. The issue with going further down Freestone is the sidewalk project that's going to happen later this summer.
Any questions for Ryan?
What's that looking at being a cost for Freestone to pave?
A hundred and seventeen thousand.
Actually, I got a question for you. It's actually good news from the standpoint of what we talked about at the commission meeting, was that we put certain, commission put in certain criteria about trying to collect delinquent payments on water. And at that time at the meeting, based on the criteria, there was a hu- four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars they were reaching out to go for, and they had at that point received three hundred and three thousand of it, which was excellent. And it really hit the, um, it didn't hit the people that owed like fifty dollars in there. It went for the, the larger ones, but longer periods of time that they were out. So we've had great success. I don't know if you got any sense of, I know it wasn't that long ago, the meeting, but got any sense of whether it's continued in that direction?
I, I didn't get an update since the meeting last week.
That's fine, I mean, it was good to hear.
I know there were four other letters to go out for shut offs at the end of last week. And I'm sure they're, they're going to continue to collect funds on that. Seems to be working good.
Have we heard anything further on the solar panels at the landfill?
Not yet. I followed up with, with Rob Clea late last week, and they're still, they have not announced. So I'm, you know, eagerly checking my emails in anticipation, so we'll see. Stay tuned. Hopefully very soon, it should be, it should be any day, really.
Oh, I got one thing. With the track getting done in July, do you think it would benefit the town if we can take that fencing that's up there and reuse it for other projects around town?
That fence is in good shape. It all depends what kind of shape it's in after the contractor pulls it out. Depending how they do that, I think we would have to, yeah, we would have to tell them to be careful.
Because I know it's, the poles are in a bad place, that's why it's being replaced. But the fence itself is in good shape. So whether it's Riverfront Park or the Future Park off of Airline Avenue, that's...
Or possibly some of these spots we're talking about with the quarry.
Yeah.
I think it'd be a good idea to save it.
A fencing that we could use and have free material.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to talk to the contractor and see if they're going to be reasonable about taking that out carefully to keep the poles straight and, uh...
Well, even if we don't get the poles, if we just have the fencing itself.
Just take the fencing.
Yeah. Yeah, could roll the fence up and, and store it somewhere at the Public Works Garage for future use. I think that's a good idea.
Good idea.
Yeah, we have pre-construction meeting, I think, the first week of June, so I'll bring it up.
Okay.
Any other questions for that?
No.
Thanks, Ryan. We got a lot going on. So, and I, and I do want to touch on, just to get back to the water project. So as Ryan mentioned, we're drilling next week. And so one of those locations is our Portland Recreation Complex. So I just, you know, want to emphasize this so the public's aware. So when they see equipment show up at the rec complex, we'll have to kind of get the word out so people are not alarmed. It's not going, it's not going to affect the fields in any way. We're, we're further north, kind of next to the hillside that is there. But, um, but I do want to kind of point...
Well, maybe you should make an announcement on the community page on Facebook.
I, I think...
Before people start questioning everything.
Don't, don't tell them you're testing for a swimming pool.
So, all right. So I have a couple of things to touch on, too. One, with Memorial Day weekend coming up, as you all might remember, is the start of our summer hours at our transfer station. So there is a banner on our homepage at portlandct.org that Dave helped us get up, where it'll, it reminds you what the hours are from Memorial Day until Labor Day. And so that is effective going forward now, every summer without the board needing to act, so.
Do we have a sign at the transfer station yet stating that?
I don't know. Do we?
Now that it's permanent and it doesn't change?
If we don't have one, we'll get one.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we were talking about making a bigger sign so people can see it, and it's obvious Memorial Day to Labor Day. Summer hours.
I want to thank the selectmen here who attended the Larry McHugh Retirement Dinner last week. Larry had, I think, over seven hundred fifty to eight hundred people in attendance. It was, it was quite the event. One gentleman even took a helicopter to the event, which was kind of neat to see. But, but honestly, Larry has been such a big part of Middlesex County and, and supporting the town of Portland over, over the years. So I really want to thank him for all of his hard work on behalf of, of the town and, and the county and the state. And also, we want to certainly welcome Johanna Bond, who is the, the new president of the Middlesex Chamber, and who also happens to be a Portland resident. So we're very proud of Johanna as well. The other, let's see, so moving on the list, two forty-eight Brownstone Avenue. They have been busy working. This is in Viro, working alongside with our engineers at Tiananbahn. And the demolition of the, what do you call it?
Scale house.
The scale house. The scale house is scheduled for Friday, I believe. And so some, some surprise news happened yesterday where they found a, another, another tank in the ground.
Gee, who would have thought?
Two thousand gallon tank that's twenty feet by four feet. That was directly behind the scale house. And so the good news was that we're going to be able to, to take that tank out, and the only cost associated with that is a fifteen hundred dollar disposal fee for the sand that was, that was used to fill in the tank. So the actual tank itself, there's no cost for us to, to remove. But that is moving forward, so that'll be nice to get this project completed with this phase of the remediation. So stay tuned on that. Let's see what else. Talked about the water. The Senior Center Kitchen Project continues to move along. Our estimated completion date is the end of July. So look for a ribbon cutting event probably sometime in early August. So stay tuned on that, we're very excited. Today, I signed the digitization agreement that we have with U B O, who was selected as our, as our vendor after doing an R F P. And I want to thank Dan Beray for working hard on this project because this is the first of a three-phase project to, to improve our land use office. And, and first, we're digitizing the records. Next is updating and having a modernized G I S mapping system. And then the third is online permitting. So all this is going to work together and hopefully save a lot of time for the people who do business in our land use department. So I am told that the first document pickup is scheduled for May thirtieth. So that's coming up very quickly. And then the G I S R F P is scheduled for the end of the month. This Friday is the end, and I'll get to the date, the nineteenth, is the last day for Portland businesses to apply for the M C R C grant program. This is a twenty-five thousand dollar, up to twenty-five thousand dollars to businesses in Middlesex County that include Portland businesses. And these are grants that you don't have to pay back, it's twenty-five thousand dollars. And, you know, as for selectmen, I want Portland businesses to apply. I want Portland businesses to win. So for those watching, please consider applying. You still have two days, so try to get those in if you can. Ryan touched on the paving at Freestone Avenue. The Splash Pad will be opening Memorial Day weekend at the Portland Rec Complex. There is a, I talked to Mark Rover today, there's a lot of lost and found items. So if you are missing items, please go down there. We don't have a lost and found, and I don't think we can maintain a lost and found with the number of items that are left there. So I just want to point that out, that please, you know, make sure you pick up. There's a lot of items that are left down there. The next thing is we have our Memorial Day Parade coming up that I just want to highlight. And the date of that is, who's got the date of it? My calendar's not working out here. It is May twenty-eighth at two P M. And it will be going down Main Street, starting at, right across from Company Number Two Firehouse, as always. So we look forward to that. There's a car show on June second with the Knights of Columbus that I want to encourage people to attend, that's always a fun time. And then the next day, June third, is our big celebration with both the town and Quarry View. And so we're very excited about that as well. And with that, that's, those are my updates. So we have a lot, a lot going on here.
Well, well, Ryan stole my thunder, all the things I would have talked about. So I actually really don't have anything there because parking rec got canceled, so. The next one's library tomorrow, so I'm good.
Okay, I actually, I missed one, too, on here. We had a ribbon cutting at the biz last week, and John was able to attend.
Retiree.
And it was, it was a really nice event. It was my hardest speech ever was in front of a bunch of fifth and sixth graders. So it's a little, little different. But, but it was, it was to celebrate the solar panels getting installed and getting turned on. And so we're, we're excited about that. It was a fun event with the Board of Education as well.
Did they sing a song? I heard that they were preparing a song, they prepared a song.
There, there was talk of Here Comes the Sun, but it didn't materialize.
I have to say what was cool is they, they did a little video. It was like a learning experience for the kids. But they asked the kids to put up their hand, how many houses have solar at home? A lot of hands went up. I mean, this town's got a lot of solar in it.
Yeah.
It was good, it was really good.
It was fun. All right, that's it. Anything else for status and committee reports?
Run out of paper.
Move on to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience? Is there anyone in the chat? I don't see anything, all right. Board of Selectmen, general informal discussion.
Yeah, I, I have something that you touched on earlier with the A E D at the park. I read that letter today, and I think it's a very good idea. Just recently, with the aid of an A E D, we were able to have a gentleman back with his family. And we see them all over, we have them all over the town. And beginning of the year for our car show, we allocated some money to put aside for a, to honor Buddy Hernandez. And we were going to buy a, or donate a thousand dollars towards an A E D for the fire department, and they were going to do a match with it. I talked to Bob, I talked to the committee, and we feel that if there's a way, we would like to donate the thousand dollars to help offset the cost of the A E D for the park. And Buddy's honor.
Just for the record, this is, this is the...
Kenny Fletcher.
Kenny Fletcher Car Show?
Yeah, yep.
That would be incredible, yeah. Very good idea. Can I get some updated quotes to our contracts? And then I'll forward it to the board. Thanks, Bob. Yeah, I think it's important. Okay. Good idea.
I just have one thing for Ryan. I know it's towards the end of the season. The high school baseball team wants to know if someone can look at the batting cage and pitching cage up there. They have poison ivy growing in it, so the balls are constantly rolling through the poison ivy in there.
At which park?
At the high school.
At the high school.
Yeah.
That's him. Wrong guy.
Whoa. Why?
Can't spray any chemicals anywhere near it.
Is that why we have a dandelion farm up there?
Correct.
Great.
But there's other, the, the, poison ivy's hard, but...
All right.
I think that's not worth poison ivy.
Anything else for general informal discussion? All right, I don't have anything under follow-up items this evening. We do have an executive session and for the purpose of contract negotiations, and we have a preliminary draft subject to change, fixed assessment agreement with B R T DeMarco, P T P L L C. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
I make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you both, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Go ahead, old man.
We will adjourn so we can close everything off now.